Talk.
Hello.
Chris.
Can you hear?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
You can. Welcome everyone to the Monday, January 25th, 2021, meeting of the school board, virtually. Lisa, could you please take the role?
Inspector Raj. Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Here.
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Diaz.
Here.
And Chair Walker.
I am here.
That's seven present at 6:03.
Very good. Thank you so much. The first item tonight is the approval of the meeting agenda and minutes. That includes the school board meeting agenda for tonight, January 25th, 2021. The school board meeting minutes from January 11th, 2021. And a special school board meeting minutes from January 20th, 2021. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none. Lisa, can you please call the role?
Inspector Diaz.
Yes.
Inspector Raj.
Yes.
Inspector Weber.
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Yes.
Inspector Aaron.
Yes.
Inspector Felton.
Yes.
And Chair Walker.
Yes.
That's seven yeses.
Thank you. The meeting agenda and minutes are approved. The first item is an update in our quality and action section on the career and college readiness initiative. And I will ask Dr. Webb to give a little introduction.
Thank you and good evening. So most of you know, we have an incredibly strong international baccalaureate program in our district. And we also, over the last four years, have really tried to create additional pathways for our students. Career and college readiness pathways to make sure that our students that want to be heading directly into careers or get that taste of things like healthcare or transportation ahead of time before they leave high school, have the opportunity to do just that. So tonight, Ben Kush, who's been our tri-district lead for our career pathway work, is going to kick us off and do an overview. And he's brought along a couple of special guests. So Ben, you can take it away from here.
Sounds great. Thank you, Dr. Webb and Chair Walker, members of the board. Thank you so much for the time this evening. Just a reminder that there are three pathways that represent our tri-district partnership or that our tri-district partnership supports. And that is programming in the area of healthcare and medicine, transportation and related technologies and business and entrepreneurship. And then we have a fourth musketeer, as it were, but we'll introduce that in just a moment. A reminder to our board members and those in, those listening that our courses are year-long courses, supported by South St. Paul and its school district, Henry Sibley and its school district, and Simley High School and the school district down there in Inver Grove Heights. You know, we spent this last fall, you know, working our way through COVID, just as all of our other courses, programs, classes have, but really continuing to work hard to kind of blow our kids' minds in terms of exploring careers and the opportunities that exist and the kinds of jobs and career trajectories that exist in each of these areas. They worked on developing professional skills, the soft skills that our business partners say are so important, if not the most important thing we can be working with our students on. You know, how to show up and show up on time and show up prepared, be a good colleague, be a good be a good coworker, be a good employee. And be someone that they look to to potentially advance or bring on. I'm also working with students that this idea of networking, the importance of making a positive impression and the idea that that first impression, you never know where it's going to take you. You never open, you never know what kinds of doors it's going to open. Also integrated into our, into our tri-district CAPS courses as an English language arts aspect, our students earning their 12th grade ELA credit for the course. We do all that in the fall so that, starting next week, Monday, actually, students can roll into an internship opportunity. It's an internship. It's a volunteer opportunity. It's a service learning opportunity. Really kind of depends upon the career field that our students are in and the kind of partnership and need and collaboration that our partners bring to the table. And so with that, to kind of talk about all that from a student perspective, I'd like to invite Kylie Seitz to step into the conversation. And after Kylie, after Kylie's done, I'll take it back and then make one more pivot. So Kylie, if you want to open up your mic and then take it from here and just kind of give folks a student's perspective of what the fall has meant and what you're looking forward to in the spring.
Um, yeah, so far it's been, I've really, really enjoyed it. Um, we are just about to end our first semester. So English will be over. And for the English course, it was mainly going over um, a novel about a trucker's perspective on his life and his career and how that went, which was different from what I'm normally reading in school, which I liked. And then, um, I also enjoyed the first trimester just because I don't know a lot personally when it comes to the trade. So that's why I'm taking these classes to just get more experience and knowledge with it, which really, really helped because there's a whole bunch. I didn't know about tools and how you just do things in general, which helped with that. And then with this next semester coming up, I've actually already got my internship job set up. So I'll be working. And then that will just be the second semester as far as I've been told and we'll discuss that in class with how that's going. Um, what we've enjoyed about it, what just kind of our thoughts and opinions about it and giving feedback. And I've actually started my job recently, earlier because I don't have anything else going on. So that's been a plus with the class that I've really enjoyed. And yeah, it's just been very educational for sure.
Kylie, remind us of the programming that you're in and who is the partner you'll be interning with?
Oh, yeah. Um, I'm in the tri-district transportations and business class. So right now I'm working at Benson Metals in Mendota and everyone there has been super helpful.
Great. And so with that, I'd like to, we talked, I teased you all with a bit of a a fourth wheel to, to, to the, to the truck that we're driving. And that is a new collaboration this year with Metropolitan State University and their School of Urban Education and the introduction of an education pathway to South St. Paul. It's a little bit different than our tri-district courses, but it's very much the same, giving students an early peek and some early experience to what a career in this field looks like. And one of the unique aspects of this class that we're so pleased with, our teacher will introduce in a minute, but our ability to offer concurrent enrollment credit through Metro State. And so with that, I'll be quiet and then turn it over to you, Tim.
Hey, thanks a lot, Ben. Appreciate all the work that you've done bringing me up to speed on this. Hi folks, my name is Tim Kanali and most of the time I'm teaching US history to sophomores, but this has been a really great opportunity to get involved in this, in this great program. Really quickly though, to acknowledge, I think Dr. Webb and Mr. Otaki at the high school have done a great job of just acknowledging from time to time where things are at. And I was just reflecting, I don't know if anybody's doing that for you folks. So we've got new school board members, we've got longtime school board members and y'all have been dealing with some heavy stuff and some tough decisions. And I just want to say I appreciate it as a member of the community and a teacher. So thanks for doing that. But equally as important is any student that's doing anything right now is really brave and really deserves a lot of respect. So I just wanted to start by noting the hard work that our school board is doing and the hard work that our, that our students are doing. Um, there's been a lot of quality in action in this class, even though it's just the first year and we're all kind of feeling in the dark. Some things that we've done is dialogue, which I think this is something that a lot of you leaders that are here have really encouraged us to do, but these students have dialogued with our administration in the building. I call them the greats. They've dialogued with their favorite teachers. And we had a great panel and recently we've dialogued with the professors and the admin over at Metro State. So that's just a great way to learn is, is the learning is in the conversation, as some have been known to say. So that's been really great. The field experience is another really piece of quality educational experience. So obviously we're, again, kind of seeing how that's going to fit this year. But normally it's going to be in the classroom, but, but our, some of our real great leaders that are in this class are going to be looking at the classroom experience kind of through a different lens in a K9 classroom and kind of bringing that learning to fruition. And then the other thing that's really cool is if they get three weeks in and they find out that they will absolutely never be a teacher ever, this is terrible, that's totally okay. Because basically all of these issues that we're grappling with as a society can be seen through the lens of education. We start with the individual, we zoom out to the family, the community, and then the systems idea, which of course is something so many people are talking about. So that's really great. Now, I put the, the picture of Amanda Gorman up there just to say, not a, not a political partisan comment, but her poem struck people and they said, that sounds great, this idea of hope and responsibility, right? And we've had some of those moments in this class. And so how we get to this goal of where you just get that feeling where you're like, this is what we're supposed to be doing. So we've got to do a lot of work to cultivate honest conversations, right? And what that means is students need to begin to feel comfortable. That's a big challenge. So we've worked, I think, to get to a place to have these difficult conversations about race, about equity, about systems, about schools and governments and all these different things. So the students have to feel comfortable. And I think we've gotten to a point where the students do feel comfortable to the point where they're saying, I don't know if teaching is going to be a good fit for me. And I appreciate that honesty. And then in this discussion with the Metro State professors, we recognized that we were able to see our favorite teachers not hit every answer, say some things that we were able to kind of pull apart and say, well, what about this? What about that? So the students were able to say, my favorite teachers, these teachers who have changed my life, they have room to grow. And that in turn kind of gave the students permission that they're not going to have the right answers on day one of whatever their job is, whether it's in the classroom or, or in the boardroom or whatever. So that was really, really cool. That was the moment when it was like, okay, we're doing all the things. We're breaking down barriers. We're feeling comfortable. We're listening. And then we're learning ultimately about ourselves, which is really what education is all about, no matter what profession you go into. Um, I see the Every Voice Matters campaign and a lot of their push to see new avenues in education, partnering with this class. And the, the dean of the school of urban education at, at Metro State kind of said, wouldn't it be great if we know that South St. Paul needs to continue to change? We know we need new leadership. What if this course is the course that pushes some of our students out into the world and then brings them back? And I think that's really great because we know that our staff needs to continue to grow and change and develop. And what if we are feeding that change? That's, that's really helpful. So, um, I really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this program. I think, I hope, over the next few years, we're going to see some really cool opportunities. A lot of quality in action. Thanks for your time.
And with that, if there's time, we certainly open the floor for questions.
Do we have board member questions? Thanks, Tim.
Ben, I have a question for you. Are there enough internships to cover the applicants?
That's a, that's a wonderful question, sir, and the short answer.
Wonderful. I just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, the short answer is yes. The, the long answer is, is it took us a while to get there. Just because if you can imagine, Mr. Aaron, that, you know, healthcare alone, between hospital consolidations and, and hospitals closing down their volunteer programs, long-term care facilities in our, this is, and this is in our healthcare realm alone. Uh, you know, I would venture to say that we, we lost a good number of our opportunities there. So we, we did a little bit of a pivot with our healthcare program. Making sure every student had that internship, that volunteer, that service learning experience. But we also kind of, you know, put a few more dishes on the table, as it were, offering up some some trainings, some, some trainings, some certifications, some, the opportunity to earn some college credit to, to fill in a little bit of the gap of the internship. So every student in our healthcare program has an internship. There were more slots than there were students. So that's great. But we did shorten those up. So students in healthcare will only be interning two days a week as opposed to the usual four, like our other two programs. But they will still have that experience and we were able to, to, to backfill some of those spots with, with some real meaningful and, and useful, useful solutions that were, were chosen and were developed with, with the input and the support of our, of our healthcare partners. Our other two programs where there are internship placements, transportation and, and business and entrepreneurship. Again, we had more placements than we did students even in this time of COVID. And the great thing is, is, you know, COVID, like all of us, it taught us to be, oh, it taught us how to be thoughtful. It taught us how to think more expansively. And so as we head into the spring of 2022, we'll have that many more partners that are poised and ready to be a part of the program.
Okay. And my second part of the question is, do you find an availability of scholarship dollars for the people entering your programs?
Um, I'm not sure what you mean by scholarship programs. Our, our courses are part of their regular high school day and they're part of their.
Once they're past their high school, are we able to get them started in, at Metro, St. Paul or Dakota County Technical?
Do we have available? Dr. Webb, I would defer that to you. I don't engage much with the scholarship.
One of the coolest features about Metro State is Metro State does break down barriers. And they're one of the leading metro universities that actually do provide scholarships to students. And they even have a foundation that if a student, let's say, has a mortgage and they're not able to pay their mortgage while they're going back to school, they, they will pick up even a portion of your mortgage due to their incredible foundation support. So things that we've never seen. So we're excited about this new partnership. Tim, thanks for leading. And Kylie, how great to see you in the transportation program. So just a shout out to both of you. And I think we had another board member, Monica, with her hand up.
Hi, I have a question for Tim on, on the education. Is, I'm, I'm hoping that then the goal, or maybe the question is, are there? Um, I know getting teachers of color has been a struggle throughout the country. And obviously those teachers of color want students of color. So are we hoping that this kind of pathway will lead to more diverse teaching core?
Yeah, I had a really good conversation with our CDLU group today and I'm working on, on finding time to get in with BPO because again, I see those, the, the, the questions and the issues that they've been grappling with recently come up in the course with, with a lot of regularity. So I think everything from the folk that the diversity at Metro State that the students are going to see through, through the experience, but also in the recruiting process, I definitely see those two things dovetailing in a really, really nice, positive way.
And if I could add, if I may add, Ms. Weber, I'm sorry to interrupt, but one of the, one of the great things about this program is that it is funded in part and in fact, funded almost exclusively through a grant from the state of Minnesota, from NDE that is targeted towards the, the exact program that we're implementing, which is, you know, how are we looking for ways to diversify our teaching, our teaching ranks? And so, um, yes, that, I mean, and that, and that's, it's, it's at the perfect intersection of your question.
How do students know about this program? Like, how are we introducing it and when are we introducing this possibility?
Yeah. So like I said, I've been, I went to the CDLU meeting today, that's our Community de Latinos Unidos, and, and talking with Amber Gay with BPO. And then also as registration kind of gets rolled out here over the next few weeks, I'm kind of in the midst of putting together a little primer on that sort of thing. And the hope is of course, that gosh darn it, if the kids aren't having the most fun, that they just share the news with, with their friends. But I would say those are the, the registration materials, going out and meeting with folks. And then also working with that connections class. So there's about eight of my colleagues that teach exclusively sophomores and meet on Wednesday mornings. And so they're going to get information from me as well. 10th graders being a big push, right? Because our ninth graders or 10th and 11th graders are registering for their junior senior year.
Tim, I, absolutely great job and I think it's really exciting. And, you know, watching the governor's Due North education plan today, I kind of feel like you're two steps ahead of that already. And also with everything he introduced today, I imagine you're going to have some really exciting conversations in your classroom as a direct result of that. So, well done.
So just to thank you again to all of our leadoff guests here, Ben, Kylie and Tim. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Kylie. And thank you to you, Dr. Webb, Chair Walker and members of the board. Have a great evening.
Nice to see you again, Ben. Thank you.
Well, quality in action continues to be the best part of our meetings. No, no different tonight. And that CCR program is always so exciting to hear about. It's, I hear people talking about it in the community and it's just such a great option for, for our students. So happy to always hear those updates. Move on to the reports section of our agenda. The first is the Building Assets, Reducing Risks, the BAR program, a little update on that. Dr. Webb, would you like to introduce that?
Yeah, I sure do. Thanks, Chair Walker. So our Director of Learning, Chad Schmidt, is going to give an introduction and an overview of our Building Assets, Reducing Risk program. This is a new program for the majority of our district. And the secondary, the high school specifically, has been using this program effectively for the past several years. So we recently district in the nation. And that's thanks to Chuck and Chad and a lot of great leadership to bring that about. Angie Ryder also, I'd give her a shout out. So let me kick it over to Chad Schmidt, our Director of Learning.
Good evening, Chair Walker, Dr. Webb, School Board and Community of South St. Paul. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Chad Schmidt. I'm the Director of Learning. And following up on what you just heard about our career and college readiness programs, we have another exciting program to share with you that is expanding from what has been at the high school for the last four-plus school years to now being part of our K-12 continuum. And so the program we're looking at tonight is called Building Assets, Reducing Risks, referred to as the BAR program. And this, what I want to do tonight is very briefly share with folks the, just an overview of what is BAR? How does it support our International Baccalaureate and multi-tiered systems of support frameworks? And what are some key steps and timelines associated with our implementation of BAR? And so what I know is our communications team has pushed out some messages, both through our newsletter to the community and through social media. And so I'm just trying to provide a little bit more depth and insight to what this program is and how it will be useful in South St. Paul. So the BAR model starts with this statement, that great teaching begins with understanding each student as a learner and as a person. And so the BAR program has a number of strategies and structures that help target this work of better understanding so we can build on students' strengths, proactively addressing non-academic reasons that might cause students to struggle in school, and identifying resources that students may need and steps that they can take so that they can thrive. There are two primary pillars to the BAR program. And those are focused on intentional relationships, number one, you should have heard that a couple of times already, and the use of real-time data to drive improvement. So those intentional relationships that are the focus of the BAR program are in three primary lenses. One is about staff to staff, that there are improved relationships and collaboration that happens there. The second is about staff to student, that there are positive adult-student relationships that help students engage with content and, and have success in school. And third, and potentially most important, are the student-to-student relationships, that we help students build effective and successful relationships with their peers. The second pillar of the BAR program is the use of real-time data. And so some data is oftentimes thought of as numbers. I want to be clear here that this is not solely about numbers. This is about getting to know students for who they are and being able to include that information as we collaboratively problem solve and develop action plans to help support students with whatever needs that they may have at a certain time. The BAR program has eight key strategies. And I'll back up for just a second. The BAR program is used in, I think, 17 states across America. It actually began in the Twin Cities metro area in the school district of St. Louis Park. And, and so as it has been built out over the last 10-plus years, this, this, they call it a firm but flexible model. It consists of these eight key strategies. And there are three that I'm going to spend my time talking about, but I want to be clear that they have eight comprehensive strategies. They are interlocking. They form a solid foundation and a, and a solid set of practices that help us do the work of teaching and learning to be as effective as, as we can. And so one is the focus on the whole student. That is recognizing that while academics are a part of a student's life, their relationships, their social-emotional development are also part of that whole student. And, and we focus on attending to all of those areas. That's also a strong connector with our International Baccalaureate programs, which also uses a whole child or a whole student philosophy. Number three on this list, we use BAR's U-time curriculum. And at the high school, at the secondary school level, it's called U-time. At the elementary school level, it's called I-time. And what's important about this curriculum is it is lesson plans that are built for students' social-emotional development. And so this gives us a consistent and system-wide approach to make sure that we are helping students learn and develop the kind of social-emotional skills that will allow them to be successful in school, in their relationships with their peers and their family, and in life beyond school. And, and then the other one I wanted to highlight tonight is this number six, Conduct Risk Review Meetings. So part of the structure of BAR is setting up teams of teachers to collab, teams of educators, not just teachers, but oftentimes it's primarily teachers, setting up teams to collaborate around students. And the very first part of the BAR conversation is, what are these students' strengths? So we talk about the assets that the student brings with them. And, and thinking about how can we build on those assets or utilize those assets to help support an area where a child might need some additional, additional structure or additional intervention? And so the BAR program has a three-structured level of meetings that are called, the first two are block meetings and the second one is this risk review meeting. And at the risk review meeting level, we're bringing forward our counseling staff, our student support specialists, our curriculum coordinators, our administrators, our principal, our, our teachers. And we are utilizing the wealth of knowledge and the wealth of experiences and tools to deliver a support to a student. So it, it, it's these eight key strategies that work in interlocking ways that help support the entire BAR program. It is important, I think, to note that BAR is the very first school improvement initiative that has successfully passed through all three tiers of the rigorous investing and innovation program sponsored by the US Department of Education. Some of the positive outcomes you see from BAR are increased student achievement, increased graduation rates. You also see students earning more of their core credits, which puts them on path towards graduation. We have stronger relationships that are part of, that, that are, that have been identified as evidence of this BAR program. We also recognize that there are stronger impacts on students who are struggling, students who have been. uh, students who have been traditionally underserved in our, in our schools and in our communities. And so, um, all in all, this BAR program, uh, has a, has a research base behind it that says it works. And it's got, uh, eight core strategies that, um, will help us, uh, support relationship building and successful and effective interventions, um, to guide students in, uh, academics and behavior, in social emotional development. The BAR program is important to us in South St. Paul because it will help us deliver our international back laureate programs and our multi-tiered systems of support framework. So what I wanted to highlight here is the, um, three IB programs that are in our school system. This first image is, uh, is of the primary years program we have set up at K through five. And if you narrow into the middle of that diagram, uh, what, what you might notice is the silhouette of the, of the three pictures. So that's the student-focused, student-centered philosophy of international back laureate programming. And then you see the next circle that says approaches to teaching and approaches to learning. So, uh, in the language of international back laureate, this approaches to learning has these five core skills, thinking skills, communication skills, social skills, self-management skills and research skills. Well, these are the five skills that those U-time lessons or I-time lessons help, uh, develop. They, they are part of that social emotional learning curriculum that will, um, provide us with a core foundation uh, for each and every one of our students. When I, uh, move my slide forward, I'll show you the middle years program image. Again, the silhouette of the students in the middle. Uh, what I wanted to connect here is, uh, the word concepts and the word global context. And so part of the IB framework is to teach for conceptual understanding. Uh, it is to, uh, think about our students' learning, both at a global context level, but also in their local context. So what is, um, local and immediate? And, uh, finally then I will, um, highlight the diploma program. And, uh, the part of this diploma program that I wanted to stretch to is, uh, just below the inner circle. It says creativity, activity and, uh, creativity, activity and service. This is about turning learning into action. And so, uh, what the BAR program helps us do by developing effective relationships with students, increasing their engagement in school and providing the kind of supports that are necessary to them. We help turn learning over to them. We help turn applying their learning, uh, so that they can take action on that. So the IB is, uh, core framework of South St. Paul schools. The other core framework that, uh, we have been, uh, working with for the last, um, well, explicitly for the last three years, but prior to that, we've been building this, uh, system, the multi-tiered system of supports. And so, um, what you see here is a number of, uh, children. And, uh, on the, on the umbrella pole, uh, it is about supporting academics. It is about supporting behavioral. It is about supporting social emotional development and it is about the whole child. So as I say those words again, I'm thinking, okay, I've already said them twice at least and maybe more times. So I'm, um, I'm hopeful that the connection of, uh, BAR, which offers some strategies and, and structures to help us deliver on our multi-tiered systems of support framework and our entire IB program. And so, uh, with that, uh, I wanted to switch over to our timeline, just so you have a, a broad sense of how this is going in our schools. Uh, in the 2016, 2017 school year, uh, Mr. Ochaki and, uh, Ms. Ryder and others at the school began, um, the connection with the BAR program. Uh, this past summer, BAR identified South St. Paul High School as, uh, a school with some, uh, very, uh, positive results going on. And so they, uh, asked us to be an anchor school in their, um, nationwide, um, networked school improvement, uh, strategy, which was funded by the Gates Foundation. Um, and just this, uh, the, the beginning of school this year, uh, Mr. Ochaki and, and his, um, building and instructional leadership team helped provide training to all staff at the high school in the BAR model and the BAR strategies. And then, uh, we were contacted by BAR, uh, this fall and, um, uh, were able to connect, uh, with them on a K-12 program. And so middle school under the leadership of, uh, Ms. Borg and others, uh, followed, uh, they had a training in late fall, so the entire middle school staff has now been trained as well. And then, uh, just this past week, uh, elementary leaders and a, a small team from both Lincoln and Capoja, uh, completed the initial training, uh, knowing that we're going to start to use some of the BAR program and strategies at our elementary school this spring with a full rollout planned for next fall. So it's been busy, uh, and, and it's been good. And, uh, one of the, one of the joys of doing this work is I had a chance to interview a couple of the teachers in the high school who have been using BAR. And, um, they were effusive about how, what BAR has done is helped bring all of our various efforts together. So our strong work around equity, our strong work around mental health and making sure, uh, that we're taking care of social emotional learning. Uh, our work in the, uh, international back laureate program and trying to provide a structured system to support every learner through MTSS. So it was just, it was very pleasant to hear that and it was great to hear the excitement they have and the hard work that they've been doing to, um, show an outcome of having more ninth graders earn core credits in ninth grade, which keeps them on this path towards high school graduation. And with that, I am going to, uh, close. So I'll get my screen shrunk again and, uh, we'll just open it up for any questions from, uh, board members or others.
Thanks Chad. Any questions from board members?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just have, um, congratulations on becoming an anchor school. I think that's so exciting. Um, I know that some of the school board members and I had met with, uh, one of the teachers a few times. Like you said, who's so excited about, um, the outcomes. And I, I'm just really excited about what's happening, how it's going to, uh, mesh with MTSS and being able to see the outcomes from there.
Great. Thank you, Linda.
I don't have a question either, but, um, I just, I would like to make sure a shout out to, um, the teachers who started doing this in 2016. Um, that, that really bought this into this heart and soul and pushed for it. Um, and really could see the difference that it was making with ninth graders. So I'd just like to give props to those, the teachers that, um, kind of started this whole process. Thanks.
Right. That's right. Thanks Nikki.
Right. Yes, uh, what Linda and Nikki have said, and it's also impressive to me that the counselors and administrators and it seems to be across the whole, all the levels of schools, um, that people are buying into it and becoming part of it. That, uh, it, it really does. The, the presentation really shows that it's tying together, you know, some of these other programs and ideas that we have and, and just bringing it all together. And so it's, it is very impressive. So, thank you.
Thanks again Chad and, uh, just a, a great job, uh, tonight, but also a great job coordinating all of this for our school districts. So on behalf of the entire board, we just want to say thanks.
All right. Number two on our reports, uh, agenda is the online school program, which I'm excited to hear more about. And again, would ask Dr. Webb to introduce it and, and tell us more about it.
I sure will. And, uh, we have, uh, I'm joined by a couple of, a couple of guests here tonight. One is, uh, Robin O'Reilly, uh, who helps, uh, with, uh, on the onsite leadership for our, uh, CLC, our Community Learning Center. And it's based out of our new facility. Uh, and when we're not in a pandemic, uh, we're running, um, full day programs there. Uh, everyone, uh, currently still in distance learning for about another week. And you'll hear later in my, uh, updates that elementary is coming back in about a week. And then we are still watching the data for secondary. But Robin O'Reilly is here. She's been instrumental in helping, uh, to move this, uh, committee forward that we are studying currently, an online school proposal for the state. Paul Brashear is also joining me here. And he is our tech director for South St. Paul Public Schools. And, uh, and I'm going to turn it over to them in just a minute to give a shout out about a few of the whys behind, uh, this, uh, application that we want to give the board, uh, an informational heads up tonight. But, uh, you know, 10 months ago, uh, we, uh, began shifting and getting pulled into the pandemic and pulled into distance learning. And, uh, at several different times during the last 10 months, our entire district has been in distance learning and has been online. And, uh, there are a number of school districts now around the state that are organizing and getting an online school application into the state to really make sure that we have the opportunity to continue to meet the needs of students and families that choose to continue in that option. So nobody knows what next September holds, but we are beginning our planning, uh, joining many school districts around the state and, uh, putting the paperwork together for an online school application. And I'd like to let Paul and Rob just share a little bit more about their why and why we are bringing this forward and getting a, a committee together to put together this online application. And, uh, Robin, I'm going to let you go first and then Paul, if you want to go second, I'll bat cleanup. Robin?
Sounds good. Paul and I decided, we're like, oh, we're going to divide and conquer some of this. So we're going to try not to overlap a little bit. And we didn't know how much Dave was going to talk about it beforehand. So, um, hi, this is the first time I'm meeting some of you and I look forward to working with you guys going forward. And it's good to see the rest of you. Um, I haven't really seen you guys around in this whole, whole pandemic that we're in. So, um, we have been busy researching how to meet the needs of all of our students and not only retain our current enrollment, but also attract more enrollment. And what we have really found is leading even into the pandemic, we had plenty of families that have reached out for different options for flexibility and just different needs that have arose that they just need more flexibility and how they, how they have their mode of education delivered. And so that was really the, the why we started looking at this. And so what we have done is, is really brainstormed to figure out how we can meet our students where they, where they're, where they're at and bring their families into it and provide what they need. So, um, we're brainstorming different ways to provide education at, at a K-two level, a three-five level, a six-eight level and a nine-twelve, knowing that all of those different grade levels have different needs attached to them. We wanted to make sure that we are looking at keeping to the South St. Paul standards and sequencing so there's seamless transfer ability between the two programs. But what we're really doing is, is, is trying to address some of these, these students. When we're looking at, there's a contingency of students that will never be able to get into a brick and mortar building, whether it is because of the pandemic or past experiences. Um, they might have different home or life responsibilities, transportation, um, health issues or, or other activities, intensive activities outside of school. And so this is a, a way that we're able to, to meet that need. And what we're really doing is, is we're building programs for students that are really looking to own their learning for that student agency and learning at their own pace. Um, looking for flexibility with schedule, flexibility with course completion. And we're looking for, um, a way for these independent learners to have, have an avenue that they can go with. Um, and just really, really maximize what we have already set up in their, in our district because we have a great program and just giving families those options.
Thanks, Robin. And Paul, do you want to add on to that? Other things that you think are critical to submitting this application?
Yeah, thanks Dave. Uh, uh, first of all, I'd note, and you can tell from, from just how Robin described it, that, that we're really not talking about just a continuation of the distance learning response we've had to the pandemic emergency, but really, really about establishing a, a permanent school um, that can bring, uh, South St. Paul education to students. As Robin said, that either by preference or by requirement, just can't attend a regular school building and need something that's more along lines of, of, of a remote online learning program. Uh, we've also been talking about this actually in one area or another of the district for more than a year. And it's just at this point, uh, things have conchiled together. And as Dave said, the team has, has, uh, decided to move forward with, uh, the committee has decided to move forward with an application at this time. The, I think the important thing to know of what we're talking about is, is we're, we're, we're talking about establishing a new school, but it's a new school in the South St. Paul School District with the South St. Paul standards. As, as Robin mentioned, South St. Paul curriculum, South St. Paul teachers, kids getting a South St. Paul education. Some may be in it for the long haul in the program. Some may be moving in and out of our regular schools, our brick and mortar schools into an online school. Uh, and, and, uh, what we want to make sure is that we're providing a coherent experience for students who, who wind up being in that case and an equivalent experience in terms of what students are learning, uh, to, uh, to the students, our South St. Paul students who are also in our brick and mortar schools.
Thanks Paul. And, uh, board members are aware that, uh, we have an online program. And many of our students take online courses and have for the past six, seven years. Uh, but it's really limited to students that are 16 and older. And we can only provide that online programming, uh, for students that are resident students as well. So we're trying to, uh, again, follow the state recommended, uh, application process, following many other school districts in the state this year as, uh, we prep for next year and just making sure that we're positioning our school district well. So I'm going to quiet down and see if there might be board member questions tonight.
How would, how would an enrolled student in the online school count for per pupil formula dollars?
Yeah, they, uh, actually from our understanding is they would count the same as a regular in-class student. Uh, and so the, uh, the 1.0 would follow the students, whether they're online or whether they are in person. And, uh, we just, uh, part of making sure that we're continuing to increase enrollment and attract students is to look at all and trying to support all students and the needs of all families.
Can I add to that at all? Or as far as we'd have to determine if it's an independent study or a seat-based, and we would just have to identify that for the student. And that would just determine if we're going off of, the funding would be dependent on credit completion or attendance. So, but then that would go into the per pupil and that would be a full, full-time pupil.
What would that look like from the teacher point of view? Would you have dedicated online teachers? Or is it going to be the teachers that we have who are, uh, you know, doing an hour here, an hour there? How would that look?
Linda, I, I think there'd be a combination of that happening, especially as we're starting up. Uh, we, we're likely, um, submitting an application for a full comprehensive program, but we may wind up starting smaller than that, uh, in, in reality. We're not sure yet at that point and that's part of our exploration. Um, so there may be teachers who are doing a part of their, uh, their, um, their assignment in the online school, part in brick and mortar school. Some eventually who may be full-time in that mode. Uh, so it could go both ways. There are a lot of questions about that. I mean, questions just about how, how, um, how an online school might be organized, uh, because there are a lot of different models that could be there. Are students in classes or are they part of a teacher's caseload, so to speak? Uh, that of students that they're working with. Um, those are a lot of questions that we would, um, that, that we're exploring, uh, in the process of the application. The great thing about the application is it's like a, sort of a grand tabletop exercise in building a school from scratch. And, uh, and it's along the, it's along the way that you, you start to really answer all of the questions that, that we have and, and that you have and will continue to have.
Great. Thank you.
Um, I have two quick questions. Um, one is, um, a student enrolled in our online South St. Paul schools, would they be eligible to participate in any extracurriculars, activities and sports within the district?
The answer to that would be yes. Um, we'd also have to acknowledge that there is a possibility we could have somebody enroll in our school from Warroad. So, uh, you know, somewhere far, far afield in the state. So, so it may be impractical for some states, but they would be eligible, I think, for, for all the same activities that, uh, a student who is in our, our regular schools would be.
Okay. And are any of our kind of surrounding communities? Okay. And are any of our kind of surrounding communities, do they already have online options? Are we at the front of that line? What does kind of our surrounding area look like?
I can paint a picture. Several of our surrounding school districts are in the process of applying. Some do have programs up and running. Like I said, we have our program up and running. It's just for sixteen years old plus. So we're just looking to do something just a little more comprehensive, but you'll see districts like Bloomington and others that already have a program up and running.
Do you have a feel for what the, if the applications will be approved? It sounds like there's a lot of interest. Is the state inking at all as to whether or not they're just going to approve all of them? Or are they being real particular, or would, and do you have any gut feel on that?
So there are superintendents just last week that were advocating down at the Capitol and testifying at the Capitol that no school district should now have to complete this application. For the last ten months, we've all been online schools, and we should all be granted the authority to move ahead and provide this regardless of your application. We are not sure what the state will decide, so we are protecting and trying to position our district well in the event of next fall, the district, the state says, no more online unless you have an application in. We want to make sure we're doing our homework ahead of time.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, the question that I was going to ask, Linda kind of, kind of answered most of it when she asked her questions about staffing. I guess the other question I would have is location of where we would be doing these facilities at. Would it be like at one of the elementary buildings? Would it be like one central area for instruction? Or I guess, how would we locate the staffing for the different grade levels?
So one of the biggest unknowns that we don't know is how many students might be interested.
Right.
And, you know, we had to move the whole district into distance learning this year, so we have thirty-two hundred students online. But when it's, if it were a choice, we don't know if four fourth graders would be interested or thirty-four fourth graders would be interested. And we would have to continue to look at, do we use our current building structures for elementary and middle and high school? And have some hybrid type support for students? So we're in those, we're still in the application development stage. And we're here tonight to give you just the real heads up that we believe we need to get a application in, and we want to give you full notice, but we have not worked out all the details.
Well, if that's it, I want to thank Paul and Robin for coming on tonight. It's exciting. It's, I think logically, the next step, and I'm glad that we're approaching or preparing an application, because I think that's somewhere where we should be. I say exciting, because as you mentioned, it's building the school from the ground up, and I think that that would be full of challenges, but yet full of opportunities too. So we wish you the best with that and look forward to further updates on it as to how it's going. Keep us posted, please.
Thanks. We'll be back in a couple of weeks, because we need a letter of permission that accompanies our application, just a nod from the board to move forward. So we want to get our application fully developed and rolling. And again, we need that nod from the board.
Excellent. We'll look forward to it. Thanks again, Robin and Paul, for coming on tonight.
Thank you.
The third item in our report section is the, an update on the 2021-2022 budget planning. And for that, I would turn to Aaron Buschberger tonight, our finance director. Aaron?
Thank you, Chris, and school board members. I realize that some of the board members have seen some of this information already, but I think it's, it'll be a good refresher. And I think it'll be important for our community and staff to get an update as far as what we're looking towards for the 2021-22 budget planning process. So just to provide a quick overview of some of the pieces of information I'm going to be sharing tonight. So just talking about some budget assumptions and reviewing that information, referencing our fund balance policy, also going through our OPEB trust, proposed budget adjustments. And then, unique to our current situation, is the potential for some additional federal funding that could very well impact our budget projections for the next school year. So just a little bit about the district. Here's a pie chart of our general fund revenue. And you'll hear me say this many, many times, that we are extremely reliant on the state of Minnesota for our funding. You can see in the green there, we receive about eighty percent of our money from the state. In the blue is our property taxes at sixteen percent. Federal funding sources is currently at three percent. And then other, which includes fees and investment income, is currently at two percent. So the next slide explains our assumption around state revenue. As I mentioned, the majority of our general fund, funding does come from the state. And what we do know is the state is currently projecting a $1.2 billion deficit for the next biennium. And so as a piece of information for folks that don't know, the state plans their budgets on a two-year cycle or a biennium. And so the legislature is scheduled to adjourn currently in May of 2021. So in our budget planning process, we need to make an assumption of what we feel like that state revenue will look like. And so for this conversation, as of right now, we are assuming no change for state general education revenue. We feel like if, there may be an impact to school districts, it may come in other forms outside of any kind of funding reduction. And obviously, the governor has put forward some information regarding his Due North proposal that would be completely different than what we're projecting here, but we know that it does need to go through the legislative process between now and May. I will make an additional comment regarding state revenue. And something that you'll hear from us continuing over the course of the next year here is our primary funding source from the state, the general education revenue source. That funding has, I would say, significantly fallen behind, even keeping pace with inflation. And so we know kind of our starting point for state funding is already behind what inflationary factors have been over the past fifteen to twenty years. The next piece of information is our enrollment and some assumption. And so just some basic points about how do we project enrollment? So first, we look at birth rate history in South St. Paul. So we try to get a handle on what that means for especially our elementary grade years. We also look at grade progression ratios and trends. We try to get a handle on what the recent rates have been as far as maintaining our student population. Included with that is information regarding how many students actually live in South St. Paul. And we know that that number has been decreasing over the course of the past five or six years. And then finally, open enrollment trends. And so I know, especially recently, we've been having lots of conversations with the board around some of those trends, as far as seeing any open enrollment students in that come from other communities, as well as our South St. Paul families and students that may elect to attend another school district or another charter school. So with kind of those factors in play, we are projecting an enrollment or average daily membership, or ADM, of 3,032 students. This is a decrease of about eighty-seven ADM, or about 2.9% enrollment change from the 2020-21 school year. We have been seeing a little bit larger decreases over the course of the past couple of years. However, we think that that decrease won't be quite as significant heading into the next school year. I will mention two other factors related to enrollment that could have an impact. The first is our voluntary pre-kindergarten program, or VPK. And so when the funding for our caposia program was established by the legislature, that is indefinite funding, so that's in state law. However, our funding for the Lincoln Center program actually expires at the end of this school year. And so legislation will need to be addressed and approved in order to continue funding for our Lincoln Center program. And so just a quick overview on that, so how that will work. And we've done this before, and Connie has done this before. We will actually publish the Lincoln Center preschool program as a fee-based program for now. And then if we receive word that we will get additional funding, then we'll implement that at that time. And then the second bullet is, we'll really have a focus on kindergarten and first grade. And so we believe there's a number of our families in the South St. Paul community that chose to not send their child to kindergarten during the school year, because that's not required under Minnesota law. And so we're working hard to identify what our potential kindergarten and potentially first grade enrollment might look like for the 21-22 school year. So that's obviously unique to our enrollment planning for this year. So that's a little bit about the enrollment side. To shift a little bit into the expenditure side, so here's a pie chart that shows how we spend our general fund dollars. So you can see between the blue for salaries and the orange in employee benefits, about eighty percent of our costs are employee costs. And you've heard me say this before, but that's common amongst all Minnesota districts across the state. You'll see in the gray there, purchase services is at twelve percent. That's anything from paying utility bills to paying our transportation provider, things like that. And then you can see supplies and materials, capital, and others in the yellow at six percent. So really going to kind of focus on that salary and benefit piece. So the next slide shows some assumptions that we make around our salary and benefits. And so we know we have five collective bargaining groups, teachers, principals, paraprofessionals, clerical, and custodians and maintenance. And then we also have at-will employees, which we call our independent employees. And so we're currently in negotiations right now with our clerical and custodial groups. And you'll see the other contracts that expire at the end of June of 2021. And so we know at this point, those contracts are obviously unsettled for the next school year, and so we need to make assumptions regarding that for building the budget. And then the second bullet there, you can see benefits. The largest benefit that we provide currently is health insurance. We have provided some update to the board in the past that we know we are currently under a self-insurance plan, and we've been able to build enough of a reserve that will have no change in our health insurance premium for the 2021 calendar year. So a piece of good news for our budget planning heading forward here. And then just some of the other costs. So we hold most other budgets constant. We do include some inflationary factors established for areas such as transportation, utilities, and then our insurance program. And so you can see kind of the average spend that we have in those areas, but we include some inflation there to help protect against those rising costs. And then finally, on the expenditure side, so this is an important piece that helps guide our expenditure planning. And these are what we reference, our class size norms. And so you can see our current class size norms there by grade level on the left-hand side. I will say at the middle and high school level, those are the norms that we try to get within, knowing that there are some classes that could be over that and some classes that could be under that as well. I will point out that the elementary class size norms that you see here have not been at, or have been, I'm sorry, at or below the current level since 2010-11. And I think that actually might be when norms were first established, Dave. And then the secondary class size norms have been at or below that current level since 2013-14. So obviously, we've been very consistent in the norms that we've been offering. I will make two comments around our norms. And so you can, if we go, Lisa, we don't have to go back, but back a couple of slides, we showed you a decrease in projected enrollment. Sorry, Lisa, you don't have to go back. Sorry. We can stay where we're at. And so we will right-size our staffing based on that projected enrollment. So obviously, if we're projecting a smaller enrollment, we will right-size to reduce our staffing related to that. And then one of the proposed budget adjustments you may see is norms may change for 2021-22. So we're currently evaluating what that looks like grade-level basis, as well as a building-level basis as well. Shifting gears to the district's fund balance policy. So again, our fund balance is similar to having a savings account at home, right? You keep that savings on hand in case of emergencies or other situations. And so our policy states that the district will strive to maintain a minimum unrestricted general fund balance of twelve percent of the annual budget. And just for a reference point, that twelve percent equates to about one and a half months' worth of district operating expenditures. And what we know as of right now is our last audited number as of June 30th, 2020, is we're currently at eleven point five percent. So currently, just under that stated fund balance policy. Then I'll just move on to the OPEB trust fund. So OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. And so we have assets that are in a trust that can help pay for those benefits. And so we, the district, South St. Paul, along with other districts in the state, issued bonds in 2009. And so we're happy to say that those bonds will actually be paid off, actually, in a couple of days here. And so we'll actually have those assets with no related debt. So that's good news for the district moving forward. In this trust, investments can be invested in stocks and bonds and other investment vehicles. And so this provides the opportunity to generate some additional return, which I'll show you on the next slide. And so with that, we are planning for a $775,000 draw for the OPEB trust for the 2021-22 school year. So this next slide just shows a little bit of history around that trust. So you can see in the upper left-hand corner, we started this trust with just over $5 million. And then you can see the investment returns and the draws that were made with an ending balance. And so you can see kind of the first five years of the trust, we were making draws every year. However, we tried to reduce that as much as we could to try to build that balance back up. And you can see that balance was able to kind of creep back up, back towards that $5 million mark. And as of right now, if we do pull $775,000 from that trust, you can see in the kind of the lower right-hand corner, we'll have a projected balance of about $3.6 million in that trust at the end of the next school year. I do, the last line there, you can see we have an actuarial liability that we have calculated every two years. And so our actuaries say, we believe you'll have future payments of about $3.9 million. So if you look at what our balance is expected to be at the end of the next school year and compare that with the liability, we would be at about ninety-two percent funded at the end of that. And so I think after over ten years of having that trust to be at ninety-two percent funded, I think is a good piece. So I know I went through a lot of details and information on that slide, so we can definitely come back if you have any questions there. And then finally, kind of the last factor that's coming into our budget planning right now is additional federal funding. And so I just wanted to start, just take one step back and mention that we did receive additional federal funding, actually, for the current school year. And so the first is the coronavirus relief funds, or CRF. And so we received about a million dollar allocation that all had to be spent by the end of December. And so we use that for things like PPE, cleaning and sanitation supplies. We used it to help fund our emergency care program that we were required to operate. We used it for technology devices and supplies. So just kind of a wide area of of costs that we incurred in order to open school back up this fall. So obviously, extremely helpful funds and all of those monies have been spent. The second item is Dakota County. We did receive some of Dakota County's funding and that followed similar requirements that those funds had to be spent by December and all of those funds have been spent as well. We use those dollars to help support our food service program as well as some ventilation improvements that were made. And then so now looking forward for future additional federal funding. So the first is gear and Esser funds, the first round. So we were notified from the Department of Education in August that we had were allocated about $500,000 to spend. And as you can see there, we actually have between March 2020 and September 2022 to spend those dollars. So we can actually carry those forward into the 2021, 22 school year. And that is our proposal is to utilize those funds during this upcoming school year. As you can see, obviously, we haven't been, we haven't spent any of those funds to date. And then the second piece, which is is the wild card right now in our budget planning process, is a second round of additional federal funding. And that was announced in December 2020. At this point in time, we're unsure about the amount of funding and some of the other details that come with these federal dollars. And so that's currently an unknown for us right now, but could obviously have an impact in what our proposal, our final proposal would be as far as budget planning for the next school year. Obviously, all of these federal funding pieces are much appreciated and has have really helped the district out. One of the challenges that come with with this funding is the funding is only one time. And so we can't necessarily commit to significant ongoing costs because once these federal funds run out, then we're on the hook for any costs going forward. So so that'll be obviously an important talking point as we continue to move forward. So with all of that information that I just went through, based on the information that we know right now, we're currently recommending a budget adjustment target of $2 million. And again, that that adjustment target is is based on the information that I just shared with you. It's based on the assumptions that we've made, the OPEB trust information that I provided as well as the district's fund balance policy that helps guide our decision making as well. So the next slide shows the actual numbers behind all of this. And so you can see the original projected amount on the top there. The second line is the OPEB trust draw that we're proposing. The third line is the gear and Esser funds that that we're planning to to use for the next school year. And then finally, you can see that budget adjustment target of $2 million. And then the gear and Esser round two, we've got some question marks there. We're hoping to learn more about that as soon as we can to help incorporate that into our planning. So if you roll that in and and look at those numbers from a fund balance policy perspective, Lisa, if you could go to the next slide. So our, the top line shows our projected fund balance at the end of this school year. So $4.8 million, that'll leave us at a nine percent fund balance according to our policy. Then you can see the projected revenues and expenses. So we currently have a projected deficit of about $1.1 million. And this is again incorporating the $2 million in proposed budget adjustments as well as those other factors. And so if you roll all of that information forward, that will leave us with a fund balance of about $3.6 million or seven percent according to our fund balance policy. So as of right now, we're proposing to to utilize some of our fund balance to help limit the amount of additional budget reductions that would need to be made. So next steps related to our budget process. So obviously, this budget presentation to the board and community tonight. Along with that, we also have a resolution later on in the agenda that will ask for your approval. And that's really, really allowing administration to move forward with proposed budget reductions as well as kind of establishing the first point in our staffing process for the next school year. We're currently, administration is currently working on developing a proposed list of of potential budget adjustments. You can see that we're obviously, as I mentioned, awaiting allocation and guidance on additional federal funding. And then we're looking to to March and April for the board to review and approve the proposed budget adjustments. And again, by doing that, that then gets this started for the next school year. And we need a certain amount of time to take care of all of that before the start of the next school year. So so with that, that includes my presentation. I know there was a lot of information here. Be more than happy to to answer any questions that you have.
John?
Aaron, a quick question about the OPEB trust as I kind of learn the budget stuff. You listed that we've got like a $3.9 million liability that is listed within there. Is that a moving target as people retire, those kind of things? Is that a static number that is a liability we have that we'll be paying down? Could you talk a little bit more about that to give me some background content?
Yeah, yes. So we are required to have a study done every two years by our actuary. And so, John, to answer your question, that number does change every two years. And the actuaries look at not only our current retirees, but they also look at our entire staff. And part of the actuarial process is they make an estimate as far as how many staff will stay through or how many, sorry, how many staff will retire from South St. Paul? What kind of benefits they'll accrue along the way? So every two years, obviously, our staffing makeup changes as well. And so that number, yes, will for sure change over time. Did I answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Yes, Monica?
This may be a longer question for a different day. But do we know, do we have any data or surveys or things of why students either choose to open enroll in other districts or choose to come into our district? Like, is there, is it a program? Is it a teacher? Is it a building? You know, quality, I don't know, like, is there, what is, do we know why people make the choices they do?
Aaron, you want to take that one?
Sure, yeah, great question, Monica. So actually, John just asked a recent question as well around enrollment. So we did a real thorough analysis during the last school year during 2019, 20. And I can send you some of that information, Monica, as well. But I think what we discovered is, yes, families were making choices. But I think more significantly, we see a lot of mobility in our community. So what we saw with the open enrollment ins and outs is there was just a lot of mobility of families moving. So that I would say was the primary piece. But yes, families are also making choices as well. And I'm trying to think, we we recently did a survey, Dave, offhand. I know Susan kind of coordinated that with some of our enrollment options. And so we can provide that as well.
And we, so you'll hear in just a minute, we tomorrow night have our kindergarten kickoff. So we want to make sure, especially in a year when our, a number of our kindergarteners took a gap year and chose to, and their families made a decision not to be here. Now that as we're coming back to school on February 1st for our our elementaries, we're having parents even enroll that, kindergarteners enrolling that didn't attend even the first half of this year. So we're, we're seeing new patterns that the pandemic is creating. And we, we know we have to up our, our game and communication and marketing. And so you'll see for kindergarten families tomorrow night, an in person session with our principal and our staff. We've just opened our enrollment center in the former bank space here in our school district for families with a couple of kiosks if they need a place to use a computer to get enrolled. So we're trying to do and increase a number of those outreach things to, and our, on our website, enrollment is now just a high functioning tool and user friendly. So we're trying to reduce all of those enrollment barriers for families.
I have a question. I heard a little chatter today that there will be a new kindergarten teacher hired at Lincoln and one at Capoja. I don't know if that's true or not, but where does that fall in the budget?
Thanks, I'll start and you can bet cleanup, Aaron, if I missed anything. So we are at this challenging spot where we have a third of our kindergarten teachers still being in distance learning and two thirds of our kindergarten teachers kind of returning to the classroom. And so our kindergarten enrollment, you saw the norms 20 to 24 earlier. When our class sizes start to get to the high side of that norms, our original plan a couple of weeks ago, and we had posted for kindergarten assistants to help out when we get to the high side of those norms in kindergarten. Unfortunately, what, and we had a meeting this morning with our elementary principals and Aaron and I and Kathy from HR. What we were seeing is that we weren't getting many applicants for the assistant positions. And so our principal said, hey, we really need to address the elementary class size. And can we post for a second half of the year teacher as we see kindergarteners? Like I said, some that weren't even in our distance learning this fall that want to return now to kindergarten. So as those numbers start ticking up, we have a posting that we're just putting up today for each elementary school. And then we don't believe that we can fill those assistant jobs. So it'll actually be teacher, cheaper to hire one teacher than three assistants at each elementary. And so we're trying to make sure that we're staying below that 24 in a classroom norm level and supporting our teachers and families.
Any other questions or comments for Aaron?
I had my microphone off. I just wanted to say thank you, Dave, for that answer.
Very good, thanks. And Kathy and Aaron deserve kudos, along with the elementary principals for, for listening to the staff, watching numbers. So they they deserve the shout out.
And Chris, if I could just make a quick question. Point, sorry, back to Monica's question. So I didn't mention, Monica, that we are planning to do kind of a similar analysis this year. So we're shooting for having something in February for the board to review for that, so.
All right, anything else for Aaron? I would just point out that, and Aaron, make sure I'm saying this correctly, that the million or so dollars we received for the CARES Act was not something we could just apply to our budget to reduce the shortfall. That had to be spent on items outside of what we had already budgeted, which we were able to do and the pandemic increased our costs so that we were able to spend that efficiently. But it was not something we could just apply to the budget to reduce the, the deficit.
That's right. I appreciate you bringing that up, Chris. That's a good point.
Better money's always got strings.
Yeah, it sure does, sure does.
Chris, if I could just add, I know the board members had heard much of this presentation before, but it's a great opportunity for our community to hear all of this information. So thank you for your patience tonight and helping to get the community up to speed and move with us. So thanks.
And thank you, Aaron, for, for spending some time with us tonight. That brings us to the last item on our reports agenda, which is the public listening session. Just because we are in pandemic mode does not mean that the public is not permitted to make comments or ask questions of the board. There is a process that you can follow that's listed out on the board or on the school website. Or you could just call the administrative offices and then they can help you with that. In the last two weeks since we last met, there have been no comments or questions from the public. So there's nothing to address here, but you are certainly welcome to do so. That ends the report section, moves us into our consent items. That's made up of two items, the financial claims and the staffing. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? I don't hear any, so I would ask Lisa to call the role, approve the consent agenda.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At Seven Yays?
That motion passes. Thank you. The next item is our policy review. There's no, there are no policies coming forward tonight, so we can skip over that and move into the business items. The very first one is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the revised school age care fees. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And then Jean, I would ask you to make any comments that you might have on it.
No, thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Webb, board members in the South St. Paul community. I will just give a very, very brief, brief update on exciting things that are happening. But before I do that, I just want to take this opportunity. As we are transitioning and getting our students back into school, our emergency care program is also transitioning over the next several weeks. So I'd like to give a shout out to Tarynique Williams, who has been our emergency care site supervisor at Capoja Education Center. And Liz Tobin has been acting as our site supervisor for emergency care over Lincoln Center. And I am pleased that I have been working alongside my program assistants and our special ed chairs since September. They have done the work. They have helped support our students and our community. So I just wanted to formally say thank you so much and continue to transition over this next few weeks to meet the needs of our families. So just briefly, just for information, some of you may or may not know much about our school age care program, but we've been providing the district in some capacity with childcare programs since 1985. We are super excited to be back in the business of our school age care program. So we are opening up on February 16th. We are currently taking enrollment at this time. It will be housed at Capoja and Lincoln Center before and after school. And then looking forward to serving the students over our non school days and busy planning and laying some groundwork, the potential as well too. So next slide, please, Lisa. So why Kids Choice? Many of our families say they love it. We're right in the building. We can drop our child off in the morning. We pick them up there. We create an atmosphere that's conducive for learning, develop- Um, we create an atmosphere that's conducive for learning, developing friends and just having fun before and after school. Uh, it's a spot that we, uh, make sure they're feels valued and respected. And then most importantly, the activities and the, um, uh, events and things that go around, um, it's very student led as far as student focus and, uh, they have a say. Many will say, well, it's kids' choice. Aren't we the ones that we're supposed to choose? And you know, one thing that we've learned through this pandemic too, is, uh, really learning how to support our, our students and bringing our skills up to helping them, uh, whether it's distance learning or as we return to continue to support them in their academics as well too. So Lisa, next slide, please. So, um, you know, kind of the day in the life, um, we will still be following all the safety precautions that have been put out and are still in place. Um, that means a, a fourteen to one, uh, kind of pod that we will be in. Um, so one adult for every fourteen of our friends. And then, um, you know, like I said, just supporting the entire child, the whole child, making sure that we're helping them with their academics. Um, getting back to being able to do some with community services. Um, and just being available to help support, like I said, their academics. So next slide, please. Um, this just talks a little bit about, and I know you've all read through it, um, just the safety precautions that we have learned while we've been doing emergency care since last March and into this fall as well too. So just, um, please note that the safety precautions will continue, um, and it's a forefront when we're doing our planning and preparing for this. Welcoming back to our Kids' Choice Program. Next slide, please. Uh, just continuation of, of what we need to do. Uh, it's been amazing to see the students, um, and staff, um, with the support of, of Shawnee and, uh, the district's nurses, uh, helping us stay safe, uh, since last March too. So we'll continue to, um, make sure we're following all the safety protocols as well. And you know, as we are preparing this, this is why we do what we do. It's been, uh, up and down ride. We are ready, um, and, uh, looking forward to helping, uh, transfer our students back into out of emergency care and back into our, um, regular school age care program too. So we're excited, um, for all those opportunities. So, we very much look forward to you, uh, welcoming our students, uh, back on the sixteenth. Um, it's an easy click on the webpage if anyone's looking for care. Um, and we also have to thank Lisa and the communications team for helping to get the information out to our families as well too. So. Any questions? Sorry, I know it's been a long meeting and I could talk forever about childcare. So.
Sometime.
Yeah. So, um, thank you. I don't know if there was any questions or concerns about the fees or, or anything to that effect. I worked with Erin and we did take a look at our neighbors and we made sure that we are still in, um, uh, we about sixty-seven percent of our families receive, um, assistance through Dakota County and our fees, um, though have gone up slightly from when we were last programming, um, they are well in line with our neighbors and well in line with the allotted money that, uh, families can access through those dollars as well.
Anything for Jean? Well, Jean, I want to thank you for coming out tonight and apologize for the kind of clunky transition from me to you at the start. Um, but is there any other discussion item that? Any other discussion that anyone would like to bring up?
Uh, could I just, uh, give Jean and her team a shout out, you know, for the past ten months? Uh, Jean's led emergency childcare, um, and, uh, food service and emergency childcare and some of those programs are the backbone uh, of really supporting our first responders and other members of our community. So just a shout out to your whole staff, Jean, under your leadership, and we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no more discussion. Uh, Lisa, will you please call the roll for the approval of the, uh, revised school age care fees?
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz? Inspector Raj?
Yeah.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you, and that motion passes. Next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the twenty twenty-one pay equity report. Uh, do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And the discussion will, uh, ask Kathy Miller to say a few words.
Uh, thank you, Chair Walker and board members. Uh, just very briefly, it, it has been a, a long, long meeting. I can see that in all of your faces here. Uh, just really quickly, uh, there is a lengthy report in your, your board packet material, so I'll just highlight a couple of items. Uh, every three years we are required to participate in the pay equity report, uh, through the state of Minnesota. And so this is our year, and so I'm requesting, uh, your approval for the twenty twenty-one pay equity report. And in the summary of the information, there are three tests that we have to, uh, pass or participate in. And the three tests are listed in your materials, so the statistical analysis, salary range and exceptional service pay. In each one of those tests, um, is a specific area that they are looking for. And, uh, we have passed all three of the criteria. Um, this information then goes to the state and they review our report. And within a year or so, they will let us know if we actually did pass the test. The preliminary, uh, information shows that we did, but until they actually come back and say, yes, you did, uh, we kind of have to go, go with the report and the, the preliminary information. Are there any questions about the details in the report?
Thank you so much, Kathy. Any other discussion? If not, uh, Lisa, can you please call the roll for the approval of the pay, pay equity reports?
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you very much. The motion passes. Uh, next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the memorandum of agreement between South St. Paul Public Schools and the South St. Paul Educational Support Professionals for Insurance Eligibility. Uh, do I have a motion for that approval?
Motion.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, any discussion? And again, we'll ask Kathy to, uh, make any comments.
Uh, thank you again, uh, very briefly. Um, this is all part of the transition from the emergency care program to the school age care program that, uh, Jean Zander spoke of. And also the staffing actions that you approved earlier in the meeting, uh, this evening. So, uh, what this memorandum of agreement does is it allows the Kids' Choice Assistants who will be moving into the school age care program to continue to, uh, receive health insurance or be eligible for health insurance uh, when they are recalled back into the school age care program, assuming that they actually had health insurance at that time. So this just grandfathers and, uh, insurance coverage for those individuals.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other discussion or questions? If not, Lisa, can you please call the roll?
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you, and the motion passes. Uh, next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the agreement for student teaching between the University of St. Thomas Education Department and the South St. Paul Public Schools. And once again, uh, Kathy, if you have a few words to say?
Uh, yes, so in your packet this evening is an agreement with, uh, the University of St. Thomas. And, uh, based on our policy, our student, uh, teaching policy, uh, we do require or you are required to approve this agreement with the University of St. Thomas, uh, before we move forward.
Thank you. I believe that I jumped over the motion in the second. Do I have a motion for this approval?
So moved.
Yeah, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And, uh, we heard from Kathy. Is there any other discussion?
How many student teachers do we usually have in a year?
Uh, that is a great question, and, uh, this year was supposed to be a slow year. And we have three, uh, student or have had three student teachers this year. Uh, in previous years, it's typically been just a couple. That has been our kind of normal practice.
And does the one teacher, I know if they're still doing like the K eight or the five twelve license, is that one teacher doing two placements in the district or is she doing one placement, one place and another placement, another place?
Um, i- each situation is kind of unique. If, if somebody needs to have a, a student placement for a K eight or a K five or five eight that you referenced, uh, likely we would have to place them in two different places with two different, uh, teachers.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just one, um, Kathy, we've, we've kind of mentioned this in the years past, but, uh, wondering about finding student teachers from colleges that maybe have a, um, more diverse, um, school base and how, you know, what are we doing to recruit in different schools? Um, you know, we've seen a lot of St. Mary's, St. Thomas, you know, are, are we, do we search for student teachers or do they come to us?
Uh, we have not searched for student teachers. They have typically come to us. Um, over the past couple of years, so maybe about three years ago, uh, we, um, kind of took a look of an administration regarding our student teaching practices and, and, um, kind of made some changes in our procedures internally, uh, and, and up, kind of upgraded our policy and tried to make it more inclusive with our mentors and a more, uh, robust training, uh, process with, with our mentors as well as the student teachers. However, the pandemic hit, and so then we kind of went to a, a bit of a, a screeching halt, even though we have three, three student teachers this year. Um, so that is an important thing for us at some point, perhaps, to be more proactive in trying to, seek to student teachers. That just hasn't been where we have, have been able to put our, our, our efforts so far.
Right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you. The motion passes. Uh, next is a result, is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve a resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and the reasons therefore. And Erin alluded to this earlier. Um, Lisa, would you please read the resolution?
Uh, this is a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Be it resolved by the School Board of Special School District Number Six, that the School Board hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and Administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to reduce expenditures and make recommendations to the School Board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions or curtailment of positions.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, I'm not hearing any, so I'd ask Lisa to call the roll.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yeah.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you, and the resolution passes. Uh, the last is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution for the Safe Route to School Boost Grant. Do I have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, I just want to give Sophie Olson, our Safe Routes to School Grant Funded Coordinator. We have a part-time coordinator here that's fully grant funded. Again, her name is Sophie Olson and she's gotten two major grants for kids and bikes. And this is, uh, the, tonight's approval is for an adapted bike fleet. Uh, and the amount of the grant is about twenty-seven thousand dollars. So she's done a great job working with, uh, Mindot, and I just want to give her a shout out. And, uh, we continue to build a bike fleet. This is not only for some additional bikes and, uh, bikes for all students in our district, uh, meaning of all abilities in our school district. And it's also for a trailer, uh, as well for those bikes. So a shout out to Sophie Olson.
Thank you, Dr. Webb, for that, uh, little explanation. Any other discussion? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Can we, uh, please call the roll, Lisa?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yeah.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you. The resolution passes. I like the sound of having a fleet of bikes. That's, uh, that's good. We will move on now to our informational items. Uh, we'll start off with the superintendent's update with, uh, Superintendent Dave Webb.
Thank you. And here's just a brief superintendent update. I'll just take a couple of minutes and just highlight a few things from around the district. I mentioned earlier, tomorrow night's a big night for our kindergarten, incoming kindergarten families. So families with, uh, current four-year-olds that are coming into kindergarten, uh, next year. Uh, both, uh, Mr. Fagazi and Mr. Breetoy and their kindergarten staff are going to have a virtual open house. So things you have to do in a pandemic, uh, but it should be lots of fun for the families and for parents. And, uh, our registration process, process will be fully open and, uh, we'll get families kind of beginning to sign up for kindergarten already for next fall. Next. Uh, as you know, the, uh, guidance has changed from the state, so we are, uh, reopening our doors for our youngest learners first. February first, we're going to bring back pre-K through grades two. On February sixteenth, grades three through five. And, uh, we'll be, we continue to study all the data about, uh, secondary, middle and high school. And we will be making a district announcement on February fifth. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, our meal distribution has been a true backbone for our families here in the community for the last ten months. That will continue even, uh, with students coming back to school for all of our families that are still in distance learning. The pickup spot will be designated for the secondary only. And all of the times and dates are listed here on the screen. Elementary transportation will be back rolling again, uh, pun intended, on February Elementary transportation will be back rolling again, uh, pun intended, on February 1st. We will have a bus pass and a seat assignment, uh, for every student, and the families will be getting a new bus pass, uh, over the course of the next few days. A few highlights from around our district. We're, uh, giving a shout out this morning to our word wall pillowcases, uh, that are featured by our kindergarteners and all of our kindergarten staff that got those in place. Uh, like how cute is that? Uh, next shot, a shout out to, uh, all of our students and staff that celebrated MLK Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Uh, and we have a few photos of our students in action. A shout out to all of our coaches and all of our athletes, uh, our referees, our staff that support and coordinate all of our activities. And a special, uh, shout out to Chad Sexhour and his leadership for coordinating not only our activities but athletics here as we started back, uh, after the holidays. Jean mentioned our school age care will be up and running before school and after school on February 16th. Uh, the website to, uh, log in and get your child registered is listed And then there's a number of upcoming events. Uh, the most, uh, important one for incoming kindergarteners is tomorrow night at six o'clock for our virtual open house. Uh, this week as our teachers transition into fullback next week, uh, there's no in-person school at our elementaries or preschool either. And then, uh, again, we'll have a preschool virtual open house, February 8th through the 12th. And I think that's it. And just a reminder about how to get board meeting materials, and you can follow that tree. Back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Uh, now move to the board member reports, uh, and we'll start off with Linda.
Uh, the only thing I have is yes, thank you to, uh, food distribution. Um, again, my, uh, very hungry 11-year-old, uh, thanks you too. Um, and we've enjoyed, uh, seeing him eat these hearty lunches. That's all I need.
Thank you Linda. Uh, Wendy, what have you got for us?
Well, excuse me. As a representative to intermediate District 917, we have been starting our, our involvement with our superintendent search. We have chosen the firm that we're going to use, although the official contract has not been signed yet with them, so I'm not going to release the name of who we have chosen. But, uh, we have many meetings scheduled coming up for that, looking for that new superintendent. So, uh, just want to put a thank you out to all my 917 board members for all of our involvement with that. So it's keeping us really busy. Uh, Education Foundation will be meeting up in two weeks, so I'll have more information on that. So otherwise, just thank you to, to all the staff, the teachers, and the, everyone that's coming back to work, the Kids' Choice, all of our bus attendants, everyone. Look forward to having you all back and, and wanting to keep everyone safe. So thank you to everybody in the district who is doing that and keeping our staff and our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you Wendy. Uh, Nikki?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. John?
I'd, uh, like to give a shout out to the high school staff. Got to participate in, uh, conferences from, uh, our home and, uh, from all of our teachers' homes last week. But, um, it was so very obvious how strong of a community that these teachers are continuing to maintain in their classroom despite the fact that they're apart. And, uh, it was great for my wife and I to be able to, um, hear their side of it. And so, great job.
Thank you. Uh, Bill?
I want to give a shout out to the boys' basketball team. I think it kind of went unnoticed, but we haven't beaten Tartan at Tartan since 1994. And my son, my youngest son was the captain of that basketball team. So, um, where it gave me a big uplift to 1994, in my quarantine, it's given me a bigger uplift this year. So shout out to the coach and the players for making my quarantine much easier. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Bill. And Monica?
I was able to attend the virtual one-act play festival that our South St. Paul Theater put on. It was a very slick operation of just being able to log in and see all the actors on stage. And their masks went well with their costumes. Um, proof that you can still project your voice even behind, behind a mask. So shout out to Mr. Holson and all of the actors, um, who participated. Um, the joke about like, if you had a wish, what would you wish for? And she asked for a tissue was probably my favorite part of the, of the one-act play. Um, also another quick shout out to our great nursing staff as students are getting ready to come back into the building and to Shawnee as our COVID coordinator and all of the extra tasks that she's been given, um, to make sure that we can have a, a safe environment for our students to come back to.
Great. Thank you, Matt Ken. Thank all, thank you to all of you. Uh, we have no supplemental agenda tonight, so at this point, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, Chris, could I just remind, uh, everyone that we will be back in person on February 8th, uh, at City Hall as a school board.
That's a, a good reminder. Um, more to come on that, but yes.
When will that be, Dave?
Uh, we will be on live at 6:00 PM, and then we have our COW meeting at 5:00 before that.
Oh, so it's at 5:00?
COW meeting at 5:00, live on air at 6:00.
Six. Okay.
6:00 PM at City Hall?
Yes.
5:00.
Any other discussion?
He's made 5:00 or 6:00?
6:00 on air.
5:00 COW meeting. Are you trying to confuse me or am I just doing this?
Be there at 5:00, Bill. Bubbs and I haven't eaten dinner. Be there at 5:00.
Okay. Should I break anything?
No. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Lisa, will you please call the roll to adjourn the meeting?
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Rush?
Yeah.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Oh, jeez. The dog just walked across my screen. Uh, yes.
Tony Bull CS.
Chair Walker?
Uh, yes.
That's seven yeas at 8:00 PM.
Very good. It's time to adjourn. So.
Okay, good night everyone.
Night.
Good night.
Bye-bye.